Okay. Oh goodness, hold on, it's not working yet. Oh goodness, what are we doing here? Let's see.
Was the Tallahassee Commission meeting tonight? Oh, it says we're live.
Oh, okay, we are live, okay. Oh, very good, very good, there we go, awesome. Well, um, so assuming that we are live, let me look on here and see if I can find this on Facebook. Oh, this is new to me, uh, all the, uh, Facebook live, but I'm gonna trust that we are. So, uh, thank you guys for being here. Um, I'm Brian Welch, and I am a candidate for the Leon County Commission District Four seat, and tonight I have a couple of fine northeast Tallahassee residents who have taken, uh, given me the opportunity to speak with them tonight. Um, I've got Danielle Irwin with me, and also Coach Steve Givens, who I've known for a long time, and, um, both of Danielle and Steve are both, uh, on the board of the Klaran Homes Association, but they're not necessarily here tonight in that capacity, they're just here as residents of Klaran, uh, to sort of teach me up about the issues that are going on in Klaran Estates. I'm pretty familiar with them, but I want to hear from the perspective of residents in Klaran, and, uh, and an opportunity for me to, to share some of my positions on those concerns. So do you guys want to take a second to introduce yourselves?
Coach?
Certainly, well, I've not been a coach in many years, I actually am Dr. Steve Givens, um, and a college professor, and a member of Klaran Homeowners Association Board of Directors. Longtime resident of Klaran since nineteen ninety-one.
Great, thanks, and Danielle Irwin, also a member of the board, uh, and a resident of, um, Klaran Estates. I live on Lake Klarani, and I am a scientist with a background in oceanography, um, as well as biology, um, and I am very happy to be here tonight.
Awesome, well, thank y'all so much, um, this is just a free-flowing conversation, you know, I, um, if you guys weren't aware, I have a pretty substantial background with Klaran Estates. Uh, I lived there right after I got married, actually, okay, here's the sort of short and dirty about my, I moved to Klaran Estates in nineteen ninety-eight, soon as I moved to Tallahassee, lived in Klaran Estates, um, got a job at the Klaran Country Club when I was eighteen years old, working on the greens, uh, out on the, as a greenskeeper, and did that for a year while I was, uh, in college, and then moved up into the restaurant, uh, after that, and met my wife, Kim, who's now my wife, Kim, she was my girlfriend at the time, she was a, a hostess at the Klaran Country Club, and I was a busboy. And, uh, we met there, and, and I've done a lot of jobs at the Klaran Country Club, worked there in many capacities for many years, and ultimately, my wife and I got married at the Klaran Country Club, and then our first marital residence was in Klaran, and we lived in Klaran Acres for ten years after that. So, uh, I am a, I'm very familiar with Klaran Estates, uh, you know, I remember when I moved here in nineteen ninety-eight, I thought I'd never seen such a beautiful place, and, um, and, and so I know that here we are twenty-three years later, and, and, uh, you know, life has happened, and, and I still, although I don't live in Klaran Estates anymore, I do own a piece of property in Klaran Estates with my mother, who lives in the villages of Klaran, right there off Danin Lakes. So I'm very familiar with the community, and, you know, obviously, I'm running for the County Commission District Four seat, which represents Klaran Estates, and, and I know we've had some trouble and some controversy and some issues with some of the decisions that have been made that impact Klaran Estates, and I would love to hear you guys' perspective on those things, and, and as your prospective county commissioner, um, you know, I want to make sure that I represent the interests of the folks who live in Klaran Estates. Uh, I've said it multiple times on the campaign trail, you know, my only special interests are our neighborhoods. So when you look at northeast Tallahassee, and you look at some of the development pressures that are affecting our neighborhoods, whether it be Klaran Estates, or Summerbrook and Ox Bottom, um, you know, I think there are similar issues there in terms of, uh, a little bit of a negligence on the part of our representation. So, if you guys want to share with me the, the issues and concerns that you think are top to you, and I'd listen to them and give you my opinions.
Well, I'm ready to dive right in. All right, so this is kind of, this is current, current affairs in our local, um, Board of County Commission. Yesterday, there was a meeting that, uh, in the evening, which started at six, went until a little after eleven, um, and it involved both the city and the county commission, they were jointly meeting and having a workshop on the Walani Comprehensive Plan Amendments for the Walani Arch. Uh, and it is related to a project that our neighborhood has been closely watching and paying attention to, which is the Northeast Gateway. Um, so we already have some traffic concerns in Klaran, and so once we saw the Northeast Gateway coming, we became very concerned at the possible traffic impacts that that could bring to our community. Um, so we ended up hiring a, as a homeowner association board, we ended up hiring a traffic attorney to be able to kind of watch dog and be a part of, not just watch dog, but actually be a collaborative part of the modeling effort for the traffic study, um, and a, uh, local lobbyist to be able to help with the political aspect of the decisions, since this is a blueprint project, and it was voted on by the majority of voters, um, a few years ago. Passed overwhelmingly too, I, I hear, seven, seventy, seventy percent margin, I think. So, anyway, this, this blueprint project was barreling through, and so we kind of had to mobilize for that, and, you know, the results weren't, um, all that fantastic for the community, we were hoping to stop a, an extension into Shamrock, and it instead ended up being, um, just opened, planning to be opened concurrently with the, uh, the Roberts extension for that same road, and, um, so anyway, fast forward, that's all history now, um, and we are now looking at the potential for a lot of residential and commercial units coming in the Walani Arch over the next however many years it will take to develop that space, and I don't know that, it's not immediately planned for development, it may be five, ten more years, I don't know. Um, so, last night's vote was whether or not to, you know, let this, this, um, master plan go to, uh, the city commission, it's the city's master plan, and they're gonna be hearing it and then adopting it in November, so this was really to try and slow that process down. Um, one of the biggest concerns that Klaran has on that is that the Northeast Gateway Traffic Study was based on projections out to twenty forty-five that were about forty percent or less than what is actually proposed for max build-out for the community. So we were asking for, uh, there to be a stop clause put in the, uh, master plan that would essentially cause the development of the Walani Arch to stop just prior, in terms of planning the new parts of it, stop just prior to it reached that, uh, traffic threshold that the, uh, Northeast Gateway was based on, and trigger another traffic study. Not stop altogether, just stop, do another traffic study, figure out, you know, how the rest of the development is gonna be getting around and impacting the roads, and, and sorting all that out. Um, and a few commissioners picked up on it, our county commissioner did not pick up on it, and I'm just wondering your thoughts on the matter and how you would have handled that. Sorry, that was long-winded.
No, no, that was great, thank you, you know, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with it, um, you know, I've been running for the seat since June of twenty nineteen, so I've, I, I remember the big meeting at, uh, at, um, Klaran United Methodist, where everybody was real upset about it, I mean, I think that, I think there's several problems with the, uh, the Northeast Gateway Walani extension into Shamrock, and, I mean, not the least of which is the process in and of itself, right, I know you mentioned, you know, we don't know necessarily when this is gonna be happening, but the fact that we're advancing these comp plan amendments right now during the pandemic where we don't really offer meaningful public input is very concerning to me, and I've said repeatedly, I think that people who, who are concerned about that, that's a fair thing, I mean, I, I get his politics, and I, but I want to be fair, you know, I mean, this has been going on for twenty, thirty years, and it's gonna be going on for twenty or thirty more years, I just do not understand why we are sort of ramming these things through in the dark of night, and then to, to, to formally adopt the comp plan amendments on November tenth, when you're effectively after an election and a lame duck session of blueprint, is, again, kind of insulting to the intelligence of everyday people, I mean, it's like, why are we doing this right now, these are not urgent needs, I've also said repeatedly, because my opponent has commented that the family that owns the property is trying to make estate plans, we should not, and, and I think this is again, fair, we should not base land use planning on somebody's personal estate planning. Land use planning should be done with, to strike some kind of a balance between the impacts on established neighborhoods and the needs for growth within the community and on that property. So, uh, the Northeast Gateway Project, I think, is very concerning, I, I live north of, I live on North Centerville Road in the Centerville Conservation Community, and, you know, that, the road that's gonna come out on Roberts in and of itself is concerning to me, you're talking about a gigantic five-way intersection up there on Roberts and Bradfordville and Centerville Road, um, that's gonna have to cut through some conservation easements on the corner there, uh, which is just flatly very concerning, and no one can really tell us what that looks like, so we're kind of in a situation where we're like, hey, we've gotta do this now, but we can't tell you what it's gonna look like, and that is just flatly unacceptable, and then now, you have the, the Keep It Rural Plan, which I know that they had the opportunity to embrace last night, and they did not, which is extremely disappointing, I, I was on a, I was on the environmental forum with Commissioner Deloge last week, and I offered him the opportunity to, to sort of embrace that plan, because that Keep It Rural Plan is really a good plan for that greenways and that, and that park system, you know, expanding the buffers, it even provided land for the Northeast Park, which I'm very much adamant about getting for our Northeast families, and so for them to, to, to whiff on the Keep It Rural Plan, and then also to not even consider, as far as I can, as far as I know, they didn't even consider the stop clause on the traffic study going into Klaran, and so to go from a potential of forty-five hundred residential units to twelve thousand potential residential units, and then not agreed to, to provide a new look at the traffic impacts, I think is, is, is a real problem, and people are fair to criticize that, but that's just my understanding, um, you know, I can tell you, I think it's easy when a county commissioner who represents a certain portion of the community, um, makes a, a motion or takes a position against that community, it provides a lot of cover for the other members on the commission to, to, to hide behind that decision and kind of go along with it, and I can tell you, I've said publicly also that I would not have voted to advance the comp plan amendments right now, I don't necessarily disagree with them on their face, but I would not have voted to, to advance them right now, and I would not have voted to, to make the land, the zoning change over at Summerbrook and Bull Healy last year, that Commissioner Deloge also did. So, I, I think that your first priority as a county commissioner is to the people who you represent, the citizens who elect you, um, and for me, that, that's only people in District Four, and for Mr. Deloge, that's only people in District Four, if you don't live north of I-ten, you can't vote for Mr. Deloge, you can't vote for me, you've never been able to, and so that's got to be your first priority, and you cannot continue to cater to development interests, which it would appear is clearly what's happening. Now, I don't know why that's happening, but it's clear that's what's happening, and it's extremely frustrating, and I totally understand the residents in Klaran Estates, just like the residents in Summerbrook and Ox Bottom, and the folks in Klaran Lakes who live on Bannerman Road, it's just a really frustrating situation. Dr. Givens, what do you think about that? I assume that you share that frustration.
Uh, very frustrated, Brian, um, just to, and it's, this is not the first instance where, um, we have felt somewhat slighted in our representation on the commission, and in fact, that's been a bit of a pattern for us, um, for a number of years now. I wanted to bring up a point, and I'll have to pull Danielle into this and call on her expertise, but another issue that we face at Klaran is the continued deterioration of our lakes, our chain of lakes here, um, there's much discussion, Danielle has a field of, uh, body of knowledge and, and her field of expertise that explains better than I can, but I do want to introduce the topic to you, and then I'll, I'll pass off to Danielle, but with the continued development of northeast Leon County and Tallahassee, the watershed has begun to change, and our lakes are woefully deprived of runoff, that now is being caught by a number of holding and retention ponds north on the watershed. And so subsequently, the lack of water volume in our lakes has caused all sorts of chemical issues that Danielle can rattle off to you. Um, that, and I, I, I too live on Lake Klarani, and so, I mean, I've been here for thirteen years, and so I have watched the water levels rise and fall, the algae bloom every year, the invasive, uh, species of, uh, water plants that continue to pollute, I mean, we are actually having to pay people to come in and kill the weeds and the algae in our lakes now. Um, just recently, um, and again, I'll credit Danielle, um, discovered that there was an outfall from the lake system that was built by the Leon, uh, by Leon County, um, without a permit, and that just exacerbates the problem that we have with our chain of lakes. And so that's a major concern for not only lake residents, but for all of Klaran, because, um, those at one time, Brian, I know if, I, I've been here since nineteen ninety-one, and through the nineties, uh, and really into the early two thousands, the chain of lakes was beautiful, I, I grew up fishing on these lakes, when I was a little boy, we fished on these lakes, now, it was pre-houses, all back, Klaran was not developed quite as much as it is now, but they are in really, uh, poor condition, I mean, is that fair, Danielle, are they, would you, as a biologist, would you say they're in poor condition?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we've got a very, a struggling chain of lake system here, um, but yeah, I, I'll, I'll dive in and kind of tick off my top issues with the lakes that we've got. Um, so, i- i- and they're super complex, so let me first preface it by saying, I'm an oceanographer, not a limnologist, I've only had one limnology or a study of lakes class in my entire life, uh, but that being said, there are a lot of similarities, and I know water quality, and I know stormwater, um, from my professional career, um, so, a- and we've got, it's complex here because our lakes are interconnected, they were natural systems that were ephemeral, so they would come and go, um, the developer excavated them, so he modified them, and, and then they really, and still now, kind of function a lot like stormwater facilities, where we're receiving, the water we are receiving is largely from stormwater, um, and of course precipitation, but we've got a lot of stormwater contributing to our lakes, and so that's, um, you know, both from the city and the county. There's been confusion as to, you know, who has responsibility, the city or the county, DEP, just recently in December of nineteen, twenty nineteen, um, came to the Klaran Homeowners Association and said, so the city's been doing all this updrift or upstream, uh, work on your watershed leading to your lakes to try and improve water quality, um, but surprisingly, the phosphorus numbers are going up, not down, um, so something's not quite adding up, and they said they wanted to, uh, establish, uh, like a pollutant load, the, a total maximum daily load of pollution, it's called a TMDL, uh, for our lake for phosphorus, and so, you know, as a board, we're like, well, what are we supposed to do with this? These are natural, but yet they're not natural, you know, they're natural, but they're manipulated, and we are at the whim of, you know, influences to the stormwater leading into them that the city and the county has done. So I'll just clarify one point that Steve said, uh, we were under the assumption that the city had done the box culverts under Centerville Road leading from Lake Kent Turk, um, and they have created a bit of a semi-berm, um, through some of the, the improvements, the culvert improvements that they've done. So we submit a permit application as a homeowner association board to the Water Management District for a, a low-head berm to try and retain more of the water that does come in. Of course, we have a leaky lake system that actually leaks through the ground into, you know, the subsurface, into the, the, um, the aquifer.
Again, Danielle, even with that, um, there's a reasonable amount of evidence that that is, at least contributing to the leaky floor is the silt that we have received from the development north of Klaran, is that?
Yes, yes, I'm so glad that you brought up the silt too, because I actually just, was it yesterday, yesterday or today, I've been on the phone with the city and county, um, stormwater and blueprint stormwater engineers, between yesterday and today, had a very big meeting with them today about a whole bunch of different stormwater BMPs, not just related to Klaran, but related to our community at large, you know, Leon County, including the, the city, um, but I brought up this issue of the ditches and the, the drainage, you know, ditches that are bringing the stormwater into our lakes, Lake Klarani experiences, it's just two houses down from me, you end up having this delta of sediment that gets deposited right there, and it builds up and it starts growing, you know, shrubs practically by now, you know, it's been there so long. Well, it turns out, I was able to identify at least that particular ditch to be owned by the city, and it's the city's maintenance responsibility, you guys are the first people I'm actually able to tell this to, this is all just happening in the past two days, um, and the city said they'll come out and clean it out, they just need to make sure they have clear access down to it, they have to bring, uh, you know, uh, like an excavator down there to dredge it out, essentially, um, excavate it out, but just that apron where the outfall is, they can be doing that at every outfall, so now we should be mobilizing our citizens to let the homeowner association board know where are all the other deltas that are out there at the end of these stormwater outfalls, and let's get the city on it, there's no cost to the HOA, um, there's no cost to the residents, but you do have to have permission of the people that will have this excavator crossing across their land to get it out.
I'm a little farther down the lake from you, but I can identify two of the outfalls, um, down here that have the same system, or same issues as the one that you're describing. So, we'll get together on that on a board meeting.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I, like I said, my mom lives in villages of Klaran, and, and we own a property in there, and my grandmother has lived, um, what is the lake over there? I cannot think of the name of the road where my grandmother lived on, it's off Centerville Road, so I think it's probably Lake Kent Turk, which is, um, the little segment there, kind of across from Roberts Elementary School, I forget the name of the street. Yeah, my grandmother lived on that lake for about ten years, and, you know, we saw it go dry, and then they would, uh, actually Brad Trotman, when he was the, when he was the, the HOA director or whatever, would come out there with a tractor and clean it out himself, and sort of scrape it and excavate it himself, mow it down, you know, I remember when Shannon Lakes was, you know, full of water, and you look at it now, I was there the other day, it's kind of boat ramp, you don't even realize it, but I mean, there's like a legitimate boat ramp at the Shannon Lakes Park right there, and of course, it looks terrible, it's overgrown, it's mess, and I, I, I feel like that's an ongoing problem, uh, in Klaran Estates, and, you know, to be honest with you, I feel like that's a problem that could be solved, I think that's a simply a priority problem at the local government level, I feel like, I, I feel.
Been the sentiment, Brian, Danielle and I have been on that committee together for a couple of years now, and that's been, um, the sentiment of our committee is that there's some, there needs to be some government responsibility for what has happened to those lakes, and it's been difficult to get local government engaged with that.
I think just a lot of the issues that, that we face in the northeast, Klaran Estates, again, it comes back to priorities, it comes back to advocacy, who is fighting for us in the northeast that's in local government, I've made this point multiple times during this campaign too, I mean, we have twelve local elected officials, and I don't think any of them live north of Klaran Estates, the interest of Klaran Estates, uh, I mean, think about that, you know, thirty-five percent of the tax base, thirty-five percent of the voters in the county, and not a single elected official lives north of Klarani Way, um, and I think that that is a, when you look at the, the lake issue in Klaran Estates, and again, I'm very familiar with it, having lived there for a long time, I feel like that's always been an argument of, well, that's, that's a, it's not a stormwater pond, it's a lake, right, and if it's a lake, then the neighborhood's responsible for it, but if it's a stormwater pond, the government, you know, the city and the county are responsible for it, I, I think that's just a priority issue, I think it could be easily solved if somebody just committed to the, the fact that it was a stormwater pond, or that it needs to be cleaned up and maintained, um, by local government, so yeah, I totally agree with you, I know that's a longstanding issue in Klaran Estates, and, you know, I don't know exactly how the wheels turn o- over there in City Hall and, uh, and, and in the county courthouse, but I can tell you that, yeah, I can tell you I would make it a priority if I was the county commissioner, just like I would the Walani stuff, you know?
Well, I'd like to hear that for sure, I think that, um, it's not simple, it is complex, but it requires everyone working together, you know, they're, instead of saying it's their problem, or it's their problem, or it's their problem, it is our problem. So, we as residents have some responsibility, uh, the city has some responsibility, and the county has some responsibility, so let's get everyone together, and DEP should be involved, and the Water Management District should be involved, the Water Management District started talking about a permit for the design elevation of our lakes from when they were first constructed, I never knew anything about that, I still have not put eyeballs on that permit, so, you know, there's, we're, I feel like we're still trying to dig up the past, pun intended, um, so I, I, these lakes issues are, um, I'm, I'm very interested in them, I'm still, even two years after being on the Lakes Committee, scratching the surface of the history of it, um, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to be Lakes Chair in the future, and Chuck Faircloth and I have been, uh, talking about issues with respect to the lakes, and, um, so that's hopefully gonna happen if I get confirmed to remain on the board, if my appointment gets confirmed.
Yeah, well, and, you know, I think that takes people like yourself, Danielle, who know this stuff, and are willing to engage, and, and I know that you ran for the County Commission and, and were quite successful, I, I, I think that something that plagues us as a county and a community in general is the lack of people getting engaged in the process, so just like myself, Danielle, I think we're just like regular people, we're not sort of insiders who, who know all the players, and I think that, you know, it takes folks like us to get involved and to put ourselves out there, and I know that you've done a lot of these Zoom town halls over the course of the past year, talking about all these issues, and not just, just Klaran Estates issues, but bigger, broader county issues, I think that's a huge step in the right direction, so I, you know, commend you for, for sharing your knowledge, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, we're trying to make our community better, um, you know, I've said this a couple times too, I feel like, I feel like if people like doing this, like running for office, I, I have, I question you, right, you know, because it is tough, it is very difficult, uh, it takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of, uh, you know, pandering for money, and, and so it's a very difficult thing, and I just cannot thank folks like Danielle, and, and you, Dr. Givens, for, for serving on your boards, I, I'm on my HOA board in my neighborhood, and I know it's, it is the most difficult, it is a complicated thing in and of itself, but, uh, here's a question I have for you guys, um, you know, I got married at the Klaran Country Club, and I know that the Klaran Country Club, at least in the past year or two, has been a big issue for Klaran Estates, now, I feel like, you know, when I first filed and started filling out my issue positions, you know, the salvaging or the saving of the Klaran Country Club was a big issue for me, and so I feel like we've, we've gotten some movement and resolution on that, not necessarily because of any local elected officials unfortunately intervening, but do you guys have any thoughts on that? I know that was controversial for, for the, for the Homes Association in terms of the redevelopment and the salvaging of, of the country club.
Yeah, I, I, I can take it and kind of run with that a little bit.
Sure.
Um, the sale of the property, um, and, uh, we just thought the lakes were complicated, the sale of the country club and that transition is really complicated, um, it was a bit of a, uh, lengthy process, uh, there was a buyer, um, there were some issues, once that buyer assumed control of the property, um, he then sold it to a second buyer, says a group now that has purchased it, um, and they have closed on the property, um, and are underway, they are managing the property, I will tell you, as a member of that golf club, that they, they have made tremendous improvements, that has been a very positive thing, uh, for Klaran, and they continue to, to improve the course, and, uh, the, the physical plant surrounding the golf course, there are plans, there are renderings, um, I have not yet seen the renderings of the new pro shop, but I understand that they are underway, um, and so, um, that, by all indications, we are in smooth waters, and I hesitated on that, but by all indications, we have, um, gotten past all the issues that we really needed to get past in order for this to begin to look down the road and say, okay, we're on the path to putting this back to a, what really is a first-class golf club.
Yeah, yeah, I, um, you know, again, I'm very familiar with it, and, and I tell folks all the time, I mean, you know, one of the biggest threats to Klaran Estates is if the golf club went on. I mean, you know, one of the biggest threats to Kalani Estates is if the golf club went under, you know? I mean, you'll talk about a reduction in property values and that's just something we couldn't let happen. So my understanding is the same as you explained. I talked to buddies of mine who are members there and they tell me that, you know, Mr. Greg and Ellen, his group have really done a good job. They're, they're, they're operating it well and the course is pristine and, and that is extremely encouraging. And the idea that, that they'll be able to rebuild some of those, uh, some of those buildings around there. I mean, they, you know, obviously they've knocked down the hotel and stuff there where we stayed on my wedding night and all that. Um, it's all gone, but, but, um, man, I'm glad to hear that it's, it's thriving, you know? Back when I was, when I hung out there in 1998, 1999, 2000, you know, that was a happening place. I mean, you talk about a thriving country club and at that time it was owned by a corporation, you know, American Golf. And so it, it was nice and fun and exciting to see it thriving like that, but it was definitely showing its years. And I don't think a lot of people in Tallahassee really realize the history and the tradition that Kalani Country Club has. I mean, you're talking about PGA tour events and the biggest and the best names in golf played there. I mean, Jack Nicklaus and Arnold Palmer and.
Yes.
You know?
And so.
So, um, I, I'm.
It, that, that is a real positive. We're, we, we are knock on wood. Things will continue to progress as they have, um, with void of unforeseen issues. Um, I, I think that's on the, we're on the path to recovery because there, there was a time particularly during the, the most previous owner where, um, the condition of the course had really deteriorated. And at one time is at the times that you mentioned, um, that was a pristine. It was considered, uh, the best course in Tallahassee and it had just been allowed to deteriorate. And, um, over the course of the last really year and a half or two years, and it, and it is Jimmy, and, uh, he has a couple of partners that have put a lot of money into the course and it, it is playing very well right now. It's, it's beautiful. So they are waiting on the renderings for a new clubhouse. Um, and hopefully, uh, demolition on some of the remaining physical plant will commence shortly. Um, and I can't offer you a timetable on that because, um, I, uh, have not been offered one myself. I do meet with that group, uh, once a month. Not with the entire group. I meet with Ron Tolliver, one of the partners there, but, um, and we, he will give me an update of, uh, the progress that's being made and what kind of timetable they are on. But, um, as we met last month, um, they were, uh, not yet sure. They were again, just waiting on the drawings to be completed.
Steve, I have a question for you.
Oh, go ahead.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Please, please.
Steve, what do you think the possibility is of getting them to incorporate green building practices and low impact development in the redevelopment of that, of that, uh, clubhouse, the rebuild?
Oh, um, I don't know, Danielle. Um, I will be happy to talk with them about that.
Uh, yeah, that would be fantastic. And maybe we could even, you know, if they need ideas.
Well, uh, uh, that, uh, as I understand it, and this probably is more Kalani business than, uh, Brian Welch's business, but, um, they, uh.
That's fine.
We are, we really don't have a voice in it. You know, we are, um, cooperating partners that we coexist and we, um, support one another. But in terms of the business interest, the Kalani doesn't have any business interest in the club. Privately owned. So, but we can certainly, they are very, always very amenable to discussion. Um, so I'm sure that they would be at least willing to sit down and talk.
Sounds great.
Yeah, Steve, I was gonna ask, you know, and I got, we got 20 days until election day. I'm not going to be presumptive, but, um, you know, if I'm elected, if I'm privileged enough to win my election, I would love to be involved in those conversations and talk with the ownership group and.
That'd be great.
Help them be as successful as they can.
That'd be great. And because they have, um, really, uh, been, uh, assertive in their outreach to the, not just the Kalani community, but to people all over the Northeast because they're trying to build the membership and they're doing a fantastic job of that. I mean, membership has increased significantly in the last 12 months. And so, um, they are really, uh, assertive about finding people to talk to and, and, uh, generate interest in their club.
Right. Um, Danielle, here's a question for you about that. You know, I know they closed the north nine holes, which was controversial. I understand people were upset about that. Um, do you have any opinions on sort of what, how that looks in the future? I mean, I, I, I assume that the, I know that there was an issue about potentially developing it or letting it kind of grow into a nature preserve or something like that. Do you have any thoughts on that? Or how you think that might look in the future, the north nine?
Well, I don't have any particular, you know, ideas or aims or goals to see what that would look like. And it's, it's a little, I'll admit, it's a little confusing to know where the conservation easement is in some language that, that we hear of, um, and, and see in relationship to those. So I'd have to look at that a lot closer, but in general, in terms of any type of development that's going to happen, there's two things that I'll say about that. One, our homeowner association needs to be really careful about considering parcels to sell off and needs to really figure out what is it we're trying to raise money for? What is it the community wants? And ask those questions first before we go down that line. And then two, any development that would come, for example, to that nine hole, um, area, I would want to make sure that the development and I, this is my, really my push for all development around Leon County is that we start incorporating some of those low hanging fruit types of practices about, um, stormwater management onsite on a one, one project site, but also, uh, the way the house is built, insulated, the, you know, the H, the efficiency of the HVAC system, the indoor air quality. I mean, let's be building better homes, ones that are more efficient, cheaper to run in the long term. And it doesn't matter if that's a $300,000 home or a $150,000 home. We should be building better homes. Now that we are, so I've been a, um, lead accredited professional. So that's the U.S. Green Building Council's green rating system. Um, and I wanted to really get into the nitty gritty details of how a building is built, the building envelope, um, you know, all the, the guts of it, how you construct it, what type of materials you use for efficiency and whatnot, okay, across energy and water. Anyway, it's been 10 years since I've had it and I've seen there go from, you know, a 30% upcharge for green buildings of any kind, homes or, um, commercial buildings or public buildings, um, to now being able to achieve those same goals with zero to five percent above a normal cost of a building, depending upon how many bells and whistles you want. You, of course, you can make it much more expensive, but the basic, uh, building, and this is above and beyond the Florida building code level. This is taking it a notch above. We can be building better buildings.
Yeah, that, that kind of leads me to another question. I mean, you know, Kalani, I kind of, I kind of joke around. It's kind of becoming like the Benton Hills of the north side, right? It's kind of becoming like you're getting, uh, some younger folks, younger families moving in there, renovating older homes and really making it nice. And I think that's just wonderful. Um, do you guys have any sort of vision for the future of Kalani Estates? I mean, what do you think it's going to look like the next 10 or 15 years? What do, what would you like for it to look like?
Steve, you and I are kind of the newest board members, so I'll let you go first.
Well, I, I mean, I've lived in Kalani since 1991. This, this, I lived in a different house than I live in now, uh, when I moved here in, in 1991, moved back to Tallahassee in 1991. And so I've had the opportunity to sort of watch it evolve. I mean, I grew up here in Tallahassee in the 1960s and 70s. And so Kalani was developed in the 60s and this is where we all ran around in high school, was out in Kalani and, you know, mingled with the kids here. And then, um, through the eighties, nineties and i- it had begun to age and, um, generationally was beginning to change. And so Brian, I think you hit the nail on the head that, um, and there, we're, we're changing generations in Kalani. And so, um, to continue to, uh, come in and renovate old homes and, and, uh, maintain the beauty, the natural beauty of, of the community. And that's one of the things why, uh, people like Danielle and I are, uh, willing to get involved with this board is to maintain it because this is unique. If you look at what's being built in Tallahassee right now, nothing's being built on large lots like we have in Kalani. And with the, the covenants and restrictions that maintain a certain appearance when you are, you know, moving through the community, the neighborhood and the community. And so, um, that would be my vision or my hope for the Kalani community is that we would just maintain what has been here since it was developed. And at the time, in the 1960s, this was the preeminent development in all of Tallahassee. There was nothing north of Kalani. I mean, it, it was just next stop was Thomasville. And so this was the, the place to live. And so that's why there are large lots and large homes. And so, um, as we change out generations, I hope that the younger generations will come in and, and, uh, renovate and update and keep the property values really high and then make, make, continue to make it a beautiful community. It's a great place to live.
There you go. Sorry, my, my five-year-old.
Future generations.
Yeah, I'd like to add, uh, just a couple of things. Um, so I have young children, a high schooler, I'm not sure if I can call her young anymore, and a kindergartner. Um, and we have noticed even just on our street, a lot more families moving in. Uh, it's really been amazing to see my son now get to grow up here in this house. He's almost six. Um, and he's got neighbor friends, you know, neighbor kids that he can go and play with. And I know where he is in sort of about a four-house range. I love that. That's the type of neighborhood environment that is really conducive for families. So I hope that we will be able to focus in the next five years on our community amenities that address, you know, sort of that wider age spectrum, not just passive parks, but, um, but well, certainly improve our passive parks, the ones that we do have. I've got a park, um, not too far from my house and there's not even a picnic table there. There's a bench, which is great, but you know, little things like that. We did another park run over, run over, uh, renovation, excuse me, in, um, off of, uh, Kalani Way and a lot of stormwater improvements included a lot of low impact development stormwater approaches, which is great. That's really focusing on trying to keep the stormwater on the site infiltrated on, so it doesn't flow off. Um, so, you know, we've done some, some neat things in little bits and spurts here, but I really would like to focus on the community amenities. I think dealing with our park, our pool, our tennis courts, those are going to be high on the list of, you know, what are we going to do about these long-term? How can we improve them? I mean, the pool needs updating. There's been talk this past year, which kind of shocked me about completely closing it and being done with having a pool. And so that's the type of thing that alarms me when it pops up like that without a lot of, um, discussion on the board and in the community. Uh, so we really need to be improving the community discussion, um, and connecting that with the board. So some of the things that I hope to accomplish are more accountability. I do agree that we should be, uh, videoing our homeowner association board meetings. That would be really helpful. We've gotten more engagement in our board meetings this year than really, um, ever since I've been watching, which is, I, you know, I've been going almost every board meeting for like the past two and a half years or so just to, to, to plug in and see what's going on. And I'm glad that I have. Um, I hope to be able to continue.
Yeah, you know, I, our, my HOA board that I'm on, we've been doing Zoom meetings and you, I think you, it's kind of a blessing in disguise, you know, because you get a lot more people on a Zoom meeting. It's just so convenient. Um, and I, I tend to think that people are a little more, um, little less defensive on Zoom than they, than they are in person, you know? So I think Zoom might be a little bit of a blessing. But, um, I understand that, you know, that my kids took swimming lessons at the pool there on Kalani Way. And, and my first boss at Child's was Alan Cox, you know, who, who ran a swimming program there for a long time and grew up. Yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, it's a, I, I totally agree with you. And I think that Kalani, like I said, it's, it's, it, for a while there, it was looking a little rough and, and I think now it's kind of coming back around and people are investing in those homes and really turning them around. And I, I'm 41 and I have friends that are my contemporaries with families and young kids that are, they're moving in Kalani and renovating older houses. And some, one of my good friends moved into his, uh, his wife's grandparents' house in Kalani Estates. Um, Coach, you know, I'm talking about Brandon Riker.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, you know, there's a, yeah, I think that's fantastic. And do you guys, I mean, you have anything else you think that are sort of important issues and it, that you want your prospective county commissioner to know about? I know we didn't really get into the hardcore minutia of Walani and the sort of potential impacts that that could have on all of us on that Centerville Road corridor, but anything else?
Well, that's a good note, I think, to end it on. We need to activate our area particularly, I mean Buckhead's been pretty activated in the past few months. Um, so has Kalani. Uh, now we kind of need to reactivate Kalani a little bit as of yesterday's meeting. Let's end the note on traffic. We've got traffic pressures.
All over Kalani. I mean, we have traffic pressures and problems right now. Void of conversation about Walani. And so, and, and that is another thing, Brian, and I, I, excuse me Danielle for interrupting you.
No, please.
Um, that's another thing that we have had great difficulty engaging with, uh, city officials. Um, as Tallahassee has grown north on Thomasville Road, Shannon Lakes has become the cut through between Thomasville Road and Centerville. And it, it would, those roads were not designed for that type of traffic. And so we, we now are seeing semi-traffic, tractor trailers.
Wow.
On the Shannon Lakes Road. And so the volume of traffic there has become untenable. And that, that, the, the, the traffic patterns and volume in Kalani has become a, a major issue for our community, our residents.
Yeah, and we've got upcoming.
I mean, northeast Tallahassee in general.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Danielle.
No, I was just gonna say, we've got upcoming city commission meetings, especially in November, where the Walani Arch Master Plan will be voted on for adoption, um, into the comprehensive plan. So it's important for us to get our traffic concerns, um, you know, acknowledged in the master plan with that stop clause. And we've had two city commissioners that yesterday, last night picked up on that request and, and actually brought it up in their remarks after the public comment period, uh, to talk about, but got no traction with it. Commissioner Matlow actually made a motion to, uh, recognize it and incorporate it and it died for lack of a second. Commissioner Richardson also recognized it and said, you know, what about this traffic issue? That stop clause sounds like a good idea, but, um, got no traction with it. So if we're going to activate people in our area to deal with these traffic concerns and put some of those protective neighborhood protection types of clauses in that document, then we need to be ta- targeting people like Commissioner Bryant, the mayor, um, who else am I missing? Uh, Commissioner Williams Cox. And I think that's it. Those are the ones. And of course, tell Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Matlow, thank you. We, we need your continued support.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, do you guys feel like, I, I feel like I, I read something today where there may still be a chance for that stop clause to be put in? Okay. So you feel like that's still a chance of that before November 10th?
Between now and the November meeting, so don't delay. Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Well, that is, listen, I appreciate y'all taking the time on a, on a Wednesday night to talk with me. Uh, it's been extremely informative. I thank y'all so much for any Kalani Estates residents that are out there listening. Uh, you know, I'd humbly ask for your support. You know, my, I am one of you. And that's been my biggest pitch as a, as a candidate for the county commission is, you know, I live, work and play in this community. I drive these roads every day. My children go to the schools in the community. Um, you know, unfortunately I don't get to play on the ball fields in the community because there aren't really any. But, um, you know, I want to fight for our families. I want to be an advocate for, I want to make northeast Tallahassee a priority. And when we talk about traffic in Kalani Estates, I think you can see that across the board. I mean, you know, you look at Thomasville Road going north at five o'clock, it's a mess. You look at it going south at seven in the morning, it's a mess. I mean, gosh, the entrance to Kalani Estates on Kalani Way, just trying to get out of there in the morning is like a three light transition, you know, which is crazy. And so, you know, 14 years is a long time. I think it's fair to criticize Mr. Deloge for some of the inaction that he's, that he's, uh, experienced, that we've all experienced. And I think it's just time to breathe some life into this process and get some regular. And get some regular folks to, who really feel the impacts of the decisions that, that, that are made or not made, uh, in Northeast Tallahassee. So, uh, I will end it on that and just profusely thank y'all for participating with me, it's been a real honor. And I certainly, I hope to, uh, I hope to engage with y'all as your elected official, real soon, 20 days. I, I'm looking forward to it and I think we got a good chance, so thank y'all again, please reach out and, and contact me anytime. Uh, other than that, y'all have a great evening.
It's great, great evening, Brian, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for the opportunity, I told your wife and I'll tell you to your face, you've got my vote, Brian, good luck.
Well, Danielle, I can't tell you, you know how much that means to a person, so.
Yeah.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate it, uh, and I just, I tell you, this whole thing is humbling and, and I appreciate y'all so much. And please have a great evening and, and I'll hope to look, I look forward to speaking with y'all in person soon.
Right, sounds great.
Have a good night, bye-bye.